will not make residents and taxpayers happy. Actually, half of it's not gonna make residents and taxpayers happy. Cause they did not, they did not work, it seems, water and, and uh, did not work together. So, yeah, they, they resealed Elmira Street last year, all this up from up here, industry. They're digging that up from Pine Street to the train tracks.
No.
And then half of Pine Street that they just repaved.
That's my favorite street.
Yeah, won't be next spring.
I think it'd get direct together. Maybe like they should all get in the same room.
You would think. I don't, I don't know what happened and thankfully, that's not an Athens Borough problem. Cause Athens Borough's out of that one at Talk to Two is Pendot, so they're not Athens Borough streets. So, you know, fortunately, it's not gonna fall, I mean Athens Borough's the one that's gonna hear about it. But it's not really, it wasn't their doing, but you know, why, why they couldn't change.
It's all in the same room?
Yeah.
All hands?
You know, the streets that they did this summer do next summer, the streets they did, you know, I don't know. Yeah, I don't, that I-
It's just a way to waste money, I guess.
That's essentially what's, what's happening. It's, yeah, cause they're gonna have to repave at least sixty percent of Pine Street from Main Street to Forest Street, cause that's what they're gonna dig up. Plus the crossing at Lily Avenue, cause they're digging that now, but they're not gonna tie it in until the spring. So they're not gonna dig Pine's, cross Pine Street this fall. They will in the spring. And then like I said, Elmira Street from Traffic Light all the way to the tracks is gonna get tied up.
So do, do I order them to do the work? Like they just do that to maintain their own lines or they're getting paid?
Yeah, Aqua contracts it out, they bid it out to who does it.
Okay.
But they decide essentially when it asks.
So the towns don't, townships and the boroughs don't talk to the water company that's digging up the roads we're trying to pave?
They do.
After the-
And this was part of the thing, and this is what I'd asked over here in Westbrook and Pine Tree and all those. I actually asked the guy here, Zach Williams, if Aqua was going to do any water main replacement on any of these roads. And he said they have no plans to do them. Some of the roads in Athens Borough, they had open permits, take permits to do. So they wouldn't pave the roads with an open permit, because they could do it whenever they want. So if you pave the road today, then they wanna dig it up tomorrow. So that's why Athens Borough has been holding off some of their talking for roads, was waiting for Aqua to do their business. And what happened with Pendot, I, that I ca- I, I don't know if I'll ever know why. They, what was done this year was done this year, but it just didn't seem to make a lot of sense. That they could've made a deal for half of Pine Street. Change half, change the water main and Aqua paves wanna have Pendot redo or have. And, you know, have Doll Ripples do the whole project. And you split the bill. How that happened, I don't know. Maybe Matt knows. But, yeah, I don't know, but yeah, that's. I asked him here last week, cause I, I got the one call for Lily Ave, and so I called him and I'm like, hey, you're dig, you're digging. This isn't a design, you're dig, oh yeah, we had extra money, we had to spend this kind of a year, so we did that main. I'm like, okay, and I was like, hey, I got the plans for everything else. What are you doing that? All of those are gonna get done here as soon as we can in twenty six. You do know they just paved Pine Street? Yes, I do. Okay. You do know that somebody's home's gonna rain. Yes, I do. So, yeah.
Could be like a planning thing, huh?
It's twenty twenty five. I don't understand. Yeah, so enjoy it, probably by April.
It'll be over.
Yeah, you'll have to change your route. You'll be able to go Main Street and Keystone. That's still decent.
Yeah, still just not the same.
I know. It's not the same as Pine Pine.
Pine Pine. I like Pine. Probably put some lines on it, I'll be happy.
Yeah, I, I don't know why they, there used to be, so I don't know. Why they haven't done that. You know, are all the seams and all that, why they didn't, that I don't know. But I would think on a state road, certainly of that width, they would, they would.
We should come in, uh, paving and paving, same contract. Finish it.
Oh, you don't have one? Sorry.
I have two agendas.
Well, maybe you need two agendas.
I might, never know. He's there coming.
Oh, he's not?
He always check during night, didn't he?
He did?
Yes, he was operated on this morning.
Last week.
Oh, he wasn't here for the last one.
I was here yesterday, but it was me. That's too bad. Alright, well, it's six o'clock, if you can hold me in the corner and stand for a bunch. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Alright, Mr. McQuaid for the residents and Mr. Robson?
Yeah, he will not be attending.
He's not here?
He let me know he was not able to attend.
And Mr. Burns?
Can I say something? We're in the back here now, so can y'all speak up so we can hear you? The mics, the mics right there.
Okay.
So we can't have mumbling, we can hear.
Okay, um, Joe Burns, did anybody hear from him?
He was in today to speak with Eddie. Um, I know Eddie had said that he needed to get some additional information from you guys. And try to get briefed on the whole, what had happened since he had been on vacation.
Right, and I spoke with Eddie thereafter, and he and Joe will be meeting with me Sunday next week. It was gonna be up to Joe to find us an appropriate time, but what we had indicated, uh, was that we needed to have a specific, I guess, listing of the kinds of products, so that we can kinda figure out where that's going to be. We're all on the same page with regard to the agricultural products, but I don't know to what extent. Because I mean technically, bread could be construed as an agricultural product if it comes from wheat. So I do know that we were gonna sit down and take a look at specifically what they anticipate. And then see what we could, uh, agree on based upon the definition contained within the ordinance.
Okay. So you said that's next week?
Yeah, I believe it was gonna be Monday, that was the day we were leaning towards, but I can't say for sure. Because he was gonna reach out to Joe and then let me know.
Okay. Okay, any other voice of the residents? Okay, we'll move to the township authority. Do you have any question then?
Uh, just our, um, the last approval.
Um, the Township Planning Commission, the Green Key Solar Development is asking for a continuance to the tenth of December.
John, can I ask you a question about that? How many of these can we keep going?
I, these continuuses, we never used to go all.
Right, normally you don't grant more than three times, you know? And I'm not sure how many that they have sought, but-
This would probably be three.
Then as far as I'm concerned, there would be no more. If this is your third one, and for some reason they're not ready on December tenth?
I think the last time that they had, um, requested that, it was before the end of October meeting. So it was before that October twenty ninth meeting, it was right before that, cause otherwise something would've had to have happened, right? So that was the last one, so nothing since then has happened, you know?
And I might even go so far as to say that we recommended them that they be prepared on the tenth, because we may not be in a position to extend any further.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Township Volunteer Fire Company, I do know that, um, George asked me to share about the, um, bingo that's coming up on November the twenty fifth. It's a, I guess, a special Thanksgiving bingo, so, uh, that's been shared on the township page. And other than that, I have nothing from the fire company other than their report for the month.
And their report might look different, they're using a new system, great, just so. In case anyone's wondering why it's a little bit off, they're still trying to work out some bugs for it, um, pulling and transferring information.
Okay, good. Alright, um, Public Works, no, Parks Department, uh, looks like the Spectrum Fiber Optic line installed at Round Top Park. Um, the permit check was-
It was received.
It was received, okay. I don't see a date.
It says on here, um, there's one date this is twelve thirty one, and then there's one date this is eleven thirteen, so I'm not sure if me had heard anymore from them on it, but.
Yeah, says the date that they will begin is twelve thirty one twenty five, and it will be completed on eleven thirteen twenty five, so yeah.
I think those are reversed, but I sent a check with me, but it was, the concern before was that we would have to do it while there were rumbles.
Okay, um, and then the Tozer's Landing Pavilion, um-
Oh, yeah, cause they're completely completed and all set up down there.
Oh, wow.
And they are snagging two picnic tables from Round Top that are always the ones that are moved out from a couple of the pavilions that are tight. So here, just wanna make sure that those get down.
Wow, that's beautiful.
So they don't always have to get them back.
That's beautiful. Well done on that, that looks really great. Do you guys want me to keep going? Um, the Public Works Department, progress on the to do list?
Um, the sand and spid were both started to have little raised this till today, actually, so. Other than that, they have, I guess, all the equipment's ready for snow. And I know they're working on the spreader for one of the trucks still, but that was as of yesterday morning, so I'm not quite sure where they made it since then, but, um, decided their, everything has been serviced and-
That's great.
And I know that they did get the signs for Aaron Road, the bridge, they got those put up and a couple other signs that, uh, there's some, uh, Hello Creek is missing something that they did today, I just, you know, cause I saw them laying around, so.
Great. Um, four more truck twelve was removed from the township yard?
Final pickup, all good.
And the asphalt zipper, new timeline and financials, trust to consider?
I told him that we were still, this was, I was still a while ago, he said he was sending revised numbers. There is a little discount we could get, and I asked him how would we go about if it was decided to submit it for a grant? He submitted what paperwork and figures we could use if we were gonna submit for that funding, so.
Okay, that's good. Let's get to know going forward of with our new, you know.
Can you speak up, please?
With our new, um,
Directive.
Yes, thank you. Words escaped me. Alright, um, and then the MOU for Zach Giles, the revisit on that?
Yes, I did receive some correspondence from the union. They indicated that the MOU was contrary to the union contract, which of course raises issues from their perspective. I did reach out to Belinda, she is engaged in union negotiations at another site, municipality. Uh, so I did not actually communicate with her, but I was assured that she would reach out when she had adequate time at the office. So I will get to the bottom of that issue.
Okay. Alright, next, um, the Township Police, the sirens for Santa program?
That was launched and first releases one out, I believe, last week. And we are, I need to get a giant box for the donations here, cause we've already got, um, quite a few come in, but I'll get a box and get it ready, but it is on its way.
Okay. Uh, next we have the purchase order for the PRI training and state records management. Looks like that is for five hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. We do have the finite of that four ten one seventy-four. And that looks like it's Officer Wilson and Officer Tanner, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. That price is for the both of us.
Yeah, that's what it says here.
Yeah.
Great, great.
I'll make a motion that we pay that thing.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, uh, purchase order for McCarthy Tire for the end of year tire order. This is that order that we do every year to, for, for the tires for the cars. Says twenty eight forty eighty-eight and then ten forty. Yeah, that looks good.
Excuse me, you guys just buy tires and the end of the year for?
He buys them on hand.
He buys them ahead of time for the lower price, so then once he buys them, they sit, when they need tires, they go. And they just check off, you bought four, okay, he got four. So it's, it's, it's a cost savings effort.
Right, and did you-
Not buy as needed, it's-
Yeah, gives you a better bulk rate discount.
Yes.
And he stores them?
Say again?
And he stores them?
They store them.
Right.
I'll make a, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ron.
You do it, I'll take it.
I'll make a motion, was it pleased to order the tires two thousand eight forty eighty-eight, account number, expense line four ten three four seven.
Now, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, appoint the pension board for the police department representative?
That will be, um, Tyler Young.
Okay. Wonderful.
Once that is done, then I can schedule a meeting, another meeting.
Do we need to make a motion on that to allow him to be that?
Yep, yep.
So, I'll make, I'll make that motion to appoint Tyler.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, motion to pay, no, motion to accept a monthly reports.
Here, can we go over some of those? Be nice.
Well, Township Authority? Was, yep, so the bills totaled twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, planning? Uh, was talking about Joe and Trisha, but they're, um-
That was prior to the last meeting.
Yeah, it's a new idea. Um, fire? Fire had-
Joe and Trisha?
Uh, the Burns, that's that, um-
Five hundred fifty-one miles traveled and-
Thank you.
Three hundred sixty dollars in gas. Um, parks? Had that finished pavilion and the Spectrum Fiber Optic.
Can I ask you a question about the Spectrum Fiber Optic? What is that for?
Is there fiber optic lines that they're running?
That they're running around top?
It's on, it's through the existing, there's an existing, um, what was it, la- yeah, the clap rack, existing hole.
It's basically an upgrade of services.
They're following that, existing holes where they can, and then there's a portion that does go underground, up at the top of the park. That ends at their, um, what is it, their little service station there?
So is it, is replacing cable that's already there, or what?
Is it-
It's an upgrade the Spectrum does.
The rural areas in the state are delegating fiber optics. And up here in the northern tier, I'm on Tri County, they're based out of Nashville, they've already run theirs, clap rack is doing theirs now. Or they're all doing it, and they're bringing high-speed internet service to where the people in Dallas had for years. So that's what that is.
So you've been doing it the twenty-first century?
Yes.
So basically, they're going through their already secured right of way, which they have the right to maintain and upgrade their lines. So they're just basically telling us that they're going through their existing right of way with upgraded cable.
Well, I just wondered, cause it said fiber optic install at Round Top update, is that the same thing you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah, they're going, fiber optic line instead of coaxial.
Got you.
Coaxial, I used to bury that stuff.
The fleet tension, what is, what is this?
That's for later.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Um,
Okay.
The roads, we had the update that they got all the trucks ready for, for, um, winter. The police had twenty-three citations, no, twenty-three reports with thirteen arrests. And, uh, the building permits, which I haven't gotten to yet.
Did it tell you anything?
Uh, looks like four permits were granted. And five notices were sent. So I just need a motion to accept the monthly reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the monthly report.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. How motion to pay the monthly bills?
I'll make a motion to pay the monthly bills.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. A present minutes for the board meeting from twelve?
They were emailed.
Yeah.
And I think they had them, um, they were the ones that were in the on- that everybody picked up on Saturday.
It was in your lap, that's, okay, okay. Yeah, I got it. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Right.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next we have, um, to consider and discuss the budget allocation for Act thirteen funds. Um, is this the one that you're talking about? So we have, uh, forty-
This is how we have to, we have to do, the, yeah, and the allocation.
Make a motion for each, where? So will you just tell us what we need to do and I'll-
This is how it was done, how it read in the minutes, how it, how it said it needed to be, it needs to be, you're stating how it's allocated.
So like this-
Basically, anything was added, it shows that we're forty thousand. Yeah, and among the, is, we made, or the, each item.
So I've got this, um, the, I didn't know how you wanted it for, did that sound?
Yeah. Yeah, cause each one has a motion.
Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion to budget for forty thousand dollars for the zoning and planning, the professional line of four fourteen three ten.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'll make a motion to budget for twelve thousand five hundred in the snow ice removal materials. That is, um, four thirty-two point two hundred.
I'll make a motion to prove that.
So Bonnie seconded, all in favor?
I'm sorry.
It's okay, aye, many opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, I'm gonna make a motion to budget for nine thousand dollars for road repair and patching.
I'll second that.
And that's four thirty-eight two oh six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, we'll, I would like to make a motion to budget fifty thousand dollars for the Miller Road Bridge, which is four thirty-nine seven oh two.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, I'll make a motion to budget five thousand dollars for the bridge repair materials.
I'll second that one.
That's, I'm sorry, that's line, uh, four thirty-nine seven oh four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'll make a motion to budget for fifty thousand dollars for the Moore Road Bridge, which is four thirty-nine seven oh five.
All waste of money.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. That's all the Act thirteen that I have.
Can I ask, what are you gonna do to the Moore Road Bridge for fifty thousand bucks?
Remember, we have to pay out and then they repay us, so we have to budget that in.
There's nothing left to do on it. There was, yeah, there was, I don't know what you're gonna do to it.
So, um-
Excuse me, there's, uh, what is, do you need to do to it? In two thousand twenty-six. Yeah. Because the Moore and Miller Road Bridges weren't gonna be done until twenty-nine thirty.
But the process is started, so we don't know what, how, what that timeframe, that timeline is for the process.
And all of it was gonna be paid for by Pendot, according to Ron.
One is done.
Yes.
Excuse me. Just ignore us. Excuse me, we didn't, didn't y'all say that Pendot was gonna take over both of the bridge repairs, Ron?
Not repairs, the replacements.
Okay.
So if there's any repairs, we have money set aside if we have repairs to be done.
So you just got fifty grand for Miller Road, and then you got another fifty grand for Moore Road?
Right.
You just fixed Moore Road, there, you seen anything wrong with it?
Not since I drove it.
Not since it's been repaired for what, six months? Three months?
Yeah. Alright, uh, number two is advertisement of the proposed twenty twenty-six budget.
I'll make that motion that we have retired the proposed budget. For twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
You need to keep.
I know, that was my human person here, that I did that update, the date, I noticed it today, so I will reflect that in a minute.
I changed it.
I'm reading it here.
The agenda says twenty twenty-five, but it was supposed to be twenty twenty-six.
Well, I voted it for twenty twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Um, next, the Bicker Tilly final draft review?
We didn't get any new update from that?
Okay, well.
Other than they said that it would be, I didn't get any, I didn't see any.
Yes, we did, so, uh, the Bishop Brothers invoice update and review, did we get anything new on that?
I just have reviewed the contract, and I think there's two main issues from our perspective. Uh, one is, is that the numbers were not actually provided by Bishop Brothers, it was what was provided by Steve Keigho, as far as the appropriate tonnage. I went back through all of the tickets, it would appear as though they have utilized the full amount of the, um, two A for that road. But it does vary clearly on two different, um, areas of that contract indicated estimate, and that it was only for, um, a, I don't wanna say a rough idea, but it was only as to, would only be utilized as an estimate, that it could be more or less. And that the real reason for the bid was for the price per ton, not a lock-in for the amount to be utilized. So about, about the only thing we could argue would be if they did not utilize the amount of material that they claimed in order to build up that route. At least on the, both sides, so. It would be difficult for us to argue that they did not use the materials that they claimed.
So the overage is nine thousand eight hundred eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Nine thousand eight hundred eight dollars and ninety-four cents, correct?
So we probably hold that in?
Probably so, because everything is very clearly indicated as an estimate.
And I, when I spoke to Steve Keogh, I asked him specifically about this overage. And he said, the only way that you could avoid it is if you hired an engineering firm to come and engineer and design the road, which will cost you more than whatever the overage of material would be. He said it would cost near, you know, thirty to forty thousand to have it professionally engineered and drawn up. And he said, and a lot of municipalities don't do that, they write the vocabulary, as John stated, because the engineer of the actual road professionally would cost so much more than a lot of municipalities are willing to spend to do the road, because it'd simply be budgeted out of it. They spend it on engineering and then they can't build the road. So that's what he said, that, you know, he firmly believes that, yes, they needed that material, and I've talked to at least one of the residents on that road, and they had moved, they had changed the lay of the road a lot to get it to be where they wanted it to be, to do the proper drainage the way it needs to be. So according to Steve Keogh, firmly believes that the tonnage has gotta be right, because there, there's just, there's no way to know without engineering it first, what you're gonna run into to get to the finished product.
Okay, so does, is there a movement we need to make on this because we didn't last time?
I, I mean, I can certainly go back to them, but if we don't have any grounds to challenge it, I think you're ultimately gonna have to pay it, in which case, my recommendation, if you would, would be to make a motion to pay for the overage.
Right.
And what was the amount again?
Nine thousand eight hundred eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Nine eight oh eight, nine four nine four.
Okay, well, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the Expand Energy Lease Update, is there an update on that? I don't have, this must be.
Yeah, the last, yeah, the last, same one.
This must all go in.
These we got at the last. Or review, and I didn't know if there were changes.
Oh, I've been made a complaint.
I'm not aware of any changes. I do know that that offer has been made by Expand, and we're just looking for guidance from the board as to whether or not they wish to proceed with those.
Thoughts?
We got this far, I thought we made a motion to.
You made the motion to have John reach out to see if they would give the extra.
Right, which they did.
And they did, and then they came back with this new contract, the updated contract with those.
Right, which was essentially a clean copy.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion and we proceed with the lease.
Do I have a second?
Oh, wrong one.
And I would, sorry, but I would recommend also, uh, to include the no-access provisions contained within the exhibit, just to clarify.
Okay.
It's John's verbiage.
No access.
Right, the no-access language as contained within Exhibit A.
So that was Ron's motion and Mike's second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
I actually have.
Do you?
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, the Conrad Segal Retirement and Rate Assumptions Study Completion. So, oh, I did, did I take that off?
I have it, yeah.
So we met with John online today, took a bunch of notes. Um. He said that allowing the seven twenty-five would, it would actually decrease, and if we don't accept the change, then we could lose funding from the state. So it behooves us to, to accept the change in, um, in that percentage.
It's recommendation.
Yeah, he would recommend that we do, we accept the change.
To this.
Correct. Because otherwise, we risk losing funding from the state.
Or at least a reduction, we wouldn't lose it.
Yeah. We would just, we might not get as much as we would if we did go forward with this recommendation.
Essentially, his rationale is because the market has been doing so well that if you don't make a reduction in that, that the state may come in and say, hey, your funding is where it needs to be, where if you change that, then you'll continue to get the same amount of state aid.
So, okay, so if we don't do something, our allegation could be as little as thirteen thousand versus fifty-five. Oh, gone, gone. Um, what is this little blue box, do you understand this on the?
She's not gone, gone, she's just not in the room. Let me go get her.
Well, no, I just wondered, it says here, our approximate, um, I, I mean, I shouldn't say assume, but it says a hundred ninety thousand, that was what we should have paid?
No, we should, we, he approximated it ba- based on the, he didn't have the, the full MMO figures when he did the study, when they started the study, we now have them.
So for twenty-twenty-five, did we budget the one ninety?
Yeah.
So the state paid us the one ninety?
Aye.
Probably not the entire.
Well, it says here township's.
State aid.
A state aid is one ninety, it says township allegation is zero. I don't see that much of place since I think. And that's because the market has been doing so well.
Right.
That it funded itself.
Correct.
If that sounds right.
You wanna wait on that?
Yeah, we need, I'd like some more explanation on that one.
Okay, um.
Blue box, right?
Yeah.
It's your blue box.
Yeah.
Uh, next, the Township Public Comment Policy Review. So the change that was made, or that we're proposing, is, um, it's only on six, is that correct, John? Number six?
Oh, yes.
Six and ten, yeah, okay, so six is individuals wishing to address the Board of Supervisors must, one, sign, assign a sheet so the board can assess the time period allotted for each commenter, and two, briefly state on the sheet the subject they intend to address. Individuals will also be asked to, three, s- sign on the sign-in sheet their affiliation or interest in the subject matter that they intend to address. The other change would be ten, comments will be limited to residents and taxpayers only. Is that correct?
Yeah, there is one more, just a simple word, I included only so that all comments would occur at the beginning in the first fifteen minutes.
Number three.
Number three.
Oh, I see, number three, public comments will only be accepted within the first fifteen minutes of the meeting.
So I have a question.
The period of time during which public comments will be accepted may be changed or moved at the discretion of the chairperson. Time period will be extended beyond fifteen minutes only if in risk circumstances and at the sole discretion of the chairperson, okay. So those are the only changes.
I have a question.
But I think we just need. To make a motion.
Tressa, I have a question.
I hear you.
So is that for the portion that is the voice of the residents?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, it's for the entire meeting.
So you can sit up there and not tell us what's going on and have the meeting go on and on and on with no information shared?
No, because you have the ability to read the agenda ahead of time, and if you have a question about an item on the agenda, you can bring it up at the beginning of the meeting.
But what I don't have is access to the discussions that you have.
Okay, so at my discretion, I can choose to, to change that and move the voice of the residents to the end of the meeting.
I guess the thing that's hard is if you're new to come to the meetings, and you don't know what's, you, you're trying to figure it out. It would, it would be nice if you could just give a brief statement, you know, couple sentences to explain a little bit.
I understand that, and, and I, I do understand that not everyone can come to every meeting, I, but I also understand that when our meetings start at six o'clock and I'm not home till ten, and I only live maybe five hundred yards away from the Township Building, that's difficult for us, because every meeting, then we have new residents and we're having to explain the same thing.
Well, like I said, only if you just, it literally takes thirty seconds to give us two sentences. Just to help, I mean, if somebody wants to be involved, and you come to, you start coming and you come to, say you come for four months. You still don't know what's happening in four months, because you don't really know, like, I don't know half of the other stuff that you're talking about. You know?
I wish.
It's like, it's like the Santa, the sirens for Santa, just, let me just use that for an example. You know, as a business owner, if I knew a little bit, like, just a brief two sentences, it's something I could also advertise, or I could, but I know nothing.
Well, it was advertised in the paper.
And that's great, but who gets the paper anymore?
I mean, we read it online, most people.
And I don't, I'm a farmer, I'm up at five o'clock in the morning, and I literally have my shit kickers on right now. So like, I'm not reading the paper.
Understand.
But if I come to be involved, I, you know, I just, I'm just offering to help. So, Tressa, the executive session, uh, the last regular meeting was two hours long. So that's not a fault of residents.
Can I ask you a question? Did you not find the last meeting to be totally chaotic?
I did, because there weren't answers.
With people talking over each other?
There weren't answers.
Pardon me?
There were not any answers given.
But we don't have to answer any questions.
What?
The public says that.
Alright.
I'll be glad to provide you the copy of the O O R. Because what it says is that you have the right to comment before they vote, which is why it should be at the beginning of the meeting. They certainly have gone above and beyond to answer your questions, and I would encourage that, but it is not required by the O O R.
What is the O O R?
Office of, Office of Open Records, which is what provides for.
But please, please, don't speak.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Just don't speak to me that way, because I don't feel like I'm speaking to you that way.
I see a motion.
I'm just asking, all I'm doing is asking to try to be involved.
And I, I strongly encourage anyone.
But you can't, that's what I'm saying, though.
What I don't wanna do is have chaos like the last meeting. Nothing was accomplished at that meeting.
Nothing is accomplished at most meetings, everything gets.
At the most.
So hold on just a second.
Table, table.
Can we go back to my comment, please?
I'm gonna comment here for just a minute, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna comment here. What we're trying to achieve here, and for residents, and we've had residents that have come in that have stated these meetings are getting out of control, we're bringing order back into the meetings. So a question that you have is, you know, you don't understand the, if you understood the Christmas for Children, sirens, sirens.
Sirens, yeah, sure, I'm just using that for an example.
Right, so during the fifteen-minute Voice of the Resident, you could ask that question, what is that? What does that, what is that?
But then I would be asked, then I would be, I feel like I would take up more of your time, because I don't know what a lot of this is, so.
Right, and we could move it to the end of the meeting. What has been happening is questions have been asked that fall outside of what the agenda topic is. And then we've got three or four different conversations going with the public, and nobody, nobody can hear what is being talked about. So what, what we're doing is bring order back into these meetings, and we will review it at every meeting, every start of the meeting, and we will address, we've got the fifteen minutes, we've got three minutes, and we will prioritize based on who has called in that wants to be on the agenda for Voice of Residents. They go first, because they.
Yes, I've done that before, I just also know that if I did that, I would take up more of your time, because I would be asking you questions on so much. That's all, that's all, I'm trying to be very kind, I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
It would take you longer to explain it to me at the beginning of the meeting than just briefly give me two sentences and say, this is what this is for.
Right, and if you had a question, you could certainly call the office and just question, you know, what is that agenda item, what is that topic?
I, I wish we could get whatever could be publicly disseminated, put on the website, so that at someone's leisure, they can read this.
Yeah, I was on the website today, like, I, just briefly, you know, I just.
I, I, I don't under, I don't know websites, but I wish anything that was public, public, you know, fit for public information could be put out there so people could read that.
Like the monthly reports, for example.
Okay, we, we're gonna move on.
Yeah, we gotta move on.
So you're.
Yes, I wish we could, and I, I don't know why our website isn't.
Website's useless.
So I guess it's just a little outdated, I mean, we're.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the, uh, revised, uh, policy concerning the public comments.
I'll second. Their responsibility for doing that.
Call and pay her?
Alright, thanks.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, we have the LSA, oh, wait, let's go back real quick to the, um, Conrad Segal Retirement. Uh, Ron just had a question, Lauren, about the blue box.
The blue box on this one.
Seven hundred ninety?
Yeah.
Yes, no, we were paid back from the state, yes.
So we budgeted one ninety?
Correct.
And then the state paid us back?
Yes.
Okay.
So was that a wash?
Uh. Yeah, it was a wash, it was a complete wash.
Okay.
So, we just need a motion to move forward with that.
To decrease, like, to, to, to rate assumption of both plans.
To decrease the percentage rate. Correct.
I make a motion to decrease, to accept the recommendation on decreasing the interest rate of options.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next, the LSA statewide grant application options.
About two days. So.
Okay.
Is this something that you wanted to have sent or submitted something applied for? It's the hundred dollar fee to do it.
And did we get feedback from the last one?
I looked today and I couldn't find it anywhere, oh, I also looked early, so I don't know if it was posted later.
Oh, it was due.
It was last night, yeah.
They didn't announce, or?
I didn't see anything come in, I, I couldn't.
And that's due this week, right?
It's due by the thirtieth, but it's, oh, the, the award from the last one was at the, at the meeting yesterday.
Right.
But I haven't seen, usually we get an email that says, this was awarded yesterday at the meeting of the law, but we didn't get. It should be at least like a statewide, we should pull, to see, I would.
So can we move forward with, if we're not granted the award, that we take the feedback and reapply?
Yeah, I mean, you can certainly do that.
So what do we have on that one, that we apply for that grant?
Which two trucks? The zoning truck and the, um, the first truck.
You said by the end of the month, it's due?
It's due by the thirtieth.
I mean, I think if we weren't granted the, if we weren't awarded the grant, it makes sense to reapply if we take their feedback for whatever they, you needed us to change and then reapply. I think anyway.
I don't think there's so much, what we have to change, it's just there's so much competition, because it's just not municipalities that are doing this, it's the authorities and the nonprofits that are getting this.
Right. Right. Do we have a grant writer?
I wrote the last one.
Are you?
And I did submit it to, um, oh, what's her name?
Oh, yes, Ellen Roderick here?
Yeah.
Roderick here, regional plan.
Her address, regional planning, she did review it, and she said it looked good, everything was there, she liked the narrative, everything was good, go ahead and send it, so I sent it. But it was last year, and it takes a year for them to award, so, and it is a broad, broad, broad. So that's my, the, this is my only one that I have experience with the whole application.
I just know when I lived somewhere else, we had, we hired a grant writer.
Okay, so what do you wanna do?
Well, I would think we keep, in, in case we don't get it, till we.
Well, I would think we keep, i- in case we don't get it, to be, to put the.
Would you get anything, any feedback as to why, if we didn't?
No, I don't think so, not on this.
Well, they usually, I don't know, usually we give the defense.
Right, depends on the individual grant, sometimes they will tell you about a deficiency, other times it's just a not.
Yeah. I know they gave um, the, when there were errors on the submitter.
Correct.
So that, if there there were no errors, they probably wouldn't say, oh.
Do they at least tell you that you've been denied?
Yeah.
They told, they told the, when they asked me questions about, um, they said they needed.
I mean, she hasn't got an email yet, so that's not entirely bad.
They needed something, they needed some kind of, uh, backup, something for the quotes that we've received, I guess they didn't have a, a date, the date expired on them.
That's true.
Right.
So I had reached out and gotten requotes for, that it state that it would be good until end of this year, so I'd resubmitted them and said, okay, thanks, I'll send it on, and that was the last I heard, and then that was back in April.
And you may not hear right away either, I, if I have heard comments from other municipalities, it has stretched out even longer, so.
So what do we do?
So we can eat, I mean, I have the the information for this other salt shed, skin shed building that I could send, or I can not do. I mean, that's really the only, unless there's something you can think of that you have that would be easy to do a narrative and things for.
So we have to reconsider this week, yeah?
Well, I was just thinking, it's just, it's just reapplying for it, and.
I would have to get all requotes from, for pricing for, I can't just turn around and resend it.
For specific?
It has to be certain items, and they have to be, the deal, like, for the trucks, the dealer was, like, understood that we were submitting for a grant and that it wouldn't be until the next year, and they would hold the pricing and.
Oh, so this, this is to to reapply for the grant that you're waiting to hear, whether we got it or not?
Right.
I, I would think we just wait, and I I guess what?
No.
I mean, we can apply for a grant next year.
Yeah. So we can apply for any other grants.
Yeah, but if we get these two, then we wanna apply for next year, I think that's what you're looking for.
So we have to apply for next year for whatever.
Now.
Right now.
And they're, they're talking about, what do you know, it's it's one of those, uh, material sheds.
Well, right now, right now, they can barely, right now, for what the capacity is, I think it's three hundred, three hundred, three hundred ton, that can hold. But they were saying, for what they have out there for salt, right now, what they have on hand, they can't fit anymore in the shed, so they can't order another delivery for the salt contract until they get through it, but it'll, it's usually, it goes quick, so they have to keep ordering and in, in, in and out, they can't do like the sixty percent to have hold on site.
Do you have all the information for that?
Yeah, I got all this stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have a problem with putting that in, just taking it.
And I know last year they ran out of salt, and they couldn't get salt from anywhere.
We want it on there?
If I'm not, if I can get it with all the information that I feel is needed, I'm not just gonna send it and be like, shh, I'll send it.
Send it.
If I don't feel comfortable that I have enough guts in the, I'm not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it, but if you wanted to, okay, we need to do it, if I feel comfortable that it's at a good point and that, like, somebody could use it from the urban tier.
We get all the information back?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how much is this fee?
Hundred bucks.
Okay.
Yeah.
For a hundred bucks.
I'll make a motion to go forward with the grant application if we are not straight forwarded.
Mm-hmm.
Also.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, um, I made the motion, Bonnie, did you put for a second?
I did, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, appoint the pension board member uh for the police department.
I thought you already said that.
Right, that's right, and that's a.
I didn't.
That's a pinkback one, I'll have to pass.
That's right, right, there is. Um, eleven, personnel and staff.
We missed one.
I don't think we have anything at this point, because.
We missed two. We have two.
Yeah. Oh, the township employee vacancies, yeah.
I have, I should check, I know that the background checks were almost done for um, the individuals that were looking to move forward with color works and treasurers, so they told me they would bring them over for meetings.
So they don't have to maybe?
Shout it out, I was told they would have them, so.
Okay, well, they don't, we're gonna have to wait.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So then for eleven, there's nothing at this point, um, correspondence and information. The A S F N Local Club League Management Program Report, um, has been published, um, a Conrad Segal participant reports have also been published, and uh, the website update looks as though Cindy has been in contact with the designer at at D three Web Design, and he's in the process of working on um, content for the community and and permit pages, so that's going in the right direction.
Working on it.
And we also have the Bradford County Mosquito Report, which, yeah. I guess we're seeing somebody from them finally, and that's all the correspondence that we have.
Just to go there to the website.
Yep.
Cindy was following up with Dan, because I'm pushing for a timeline.
Yes, and I see that, but then he, he ignores the question.
And I don't see the timeline. So I may make a call to him myself, because I want a timeline.
Yeah, because it's, it's very specific, it says that want, you want to know a timeline for the website launch, and then he, when he answers the question, he doesn't say anything about it, so.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Dan, I know Dan personally, he can make that website so you can just put, you can, like, if you have an area, cause he's designed three websites for me. He can make an area, so if you have, like, where you have your minutes, you can literally copy them and paste them in sections. I don't know if that would be helpful, I don't know how much you know about a website.
Oh, I know a lot.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I I don't make the, whatever, but I'm just saying, like, it would be so simple.
It's okay.
That's why I think a call to him is warranted, if he's trying to.
I just like calling, I know him personally, I make.
Nothing about that, so.
And we're setting up folders, so the the plan is, once we get this, we'll have it projected at one of the meetings, but we don't have a timeline of when it's coming.
Yeah, I know Dan, so. He's, he does a good job, but he's not too quick.
He needs to step it up.
Okay, eighteen minutes before we adjourn into executive.
A year.
Alright, executive session six fifty-one, for Personnel and Deputy Eagle Contracts.
Rosemary, just so you guys, just for some context, I sit in these meetings, I sit in like fifty meetings like this a month. And it's very, very, very common, like ninety-nine point nine percent of meetings only allow public comment in that period of time.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm just.
I don't have a problem with that.
Context, that's all.
My, my problem with it is that they don't ever share any information.
I, I can see both sides of it.
I have to. I have to.